Okay. We're live.
We're going live.
Good evening and welcome to the Swain County Board of Education's June 8th, 2020 meeting. We're going to open with our Pledge of Allegiance by Ms. Carpenter and then our prayer by Mr. McKinney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we pray, our heavenly Father, once again, we're here to give you thanks for this school system and this community. We also are fortunate to have good, decent, Christian individuals working with our kids. And we are appreciative of everything they do for our children and the dedication that they have, which was evident this past weekend. We give you thanks for everything that we do and we pray that you lead us in the direction we go to do what's best for our community and our schools and our kids.
I will go ahead and call our meeting to order. Do we have Mr. Wilson? Is he with us?
Hello, family, I'm here.
Hey, we missed seeing you.
I know. I've been a time of there to be back in the podia.
Would you like to do your shout out first, Mr. Wilson?
I would. I know it's probably the same one that everybody else is gonna have about what a wonderful graduation we had. I'm thinking that we may have started a whole new way to do graduation. I think everybody's gonna expect to parade from now, which I think is great. And I just appreciate everybody for all the hard work they did. And I don't know that there was any one person that was more important than anybody else. I think it took a whole community to do it, a whole village. And that's my shout out for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. My shout out is actually gonna be to our seniors of class of 2020. I found this, just to say, it's an unknown author, but it spoke to me and it wanted, it spoke to me about who you are and what you are as a class and individuals. It said, "Your best stories will come from your struggles. The seeds of your successes are in your failures. Your praises will be birthed from your pains. Keep standing. I've never seen a storm last forever. Seasons change." So that really spoke to me as far as what you've gone through as a class, students of class of 2020, as well as the whole school, everybody in America's going through it. But what it means to me for you guys is that you are resilient. And resilience in the dictionary means the capacity to recover quickly from difficulties and a toughness. And even though it's been a difficult time, what you guys went through on Saturday with your graduation was tremendous. The smiles on faces I saw in pictures of your families and parents was really heartwarming and uplifting. And it just gave me hope for your guys and your future and for all of us because you're gonna be great leaders and community members as you get older. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. White? I'll kinda echo Mr. Lambert said. Shout outs to the, everyone involved in the high school graduation this past Saturday. The staff did a great job. The high school staff done a great job coordinating this event. It's very well organized and very personable. And you never know when you, when you attempt to do something like this that's all new, you just don't know how well it's gonna turn out. And, you know, everyone was concerned, but once again, it went great, I thought. And also, you know, they had the parade for the seniors in town. It went great. A lot of the community showed up to support this and I think that's probably something that they'll probably continue to do. But I don't wanna leave out, also, I wanna mention the, from what I understand, the other graduations and moving up ceremonies was a success also. Pre-K and the eighth grade moving up. I think all the, from what I understand, there was, it was a great success while social distancing at the same time. So I just wanna thank everyone so much for making these events special in these challenging times.
Thank you. Mr. McKinney?
I could say ditto, but I am gonna ditto. I was so proud of what I saw Saturday. I was disappointed I had to look at it on a screen because you'd like to be there. But I watched it off and on all day long. In fact, I was busy trying to catch up with what was left behind. I'd go back and pick up each individual. So I thought it went well. And the whole time I watched it also, I was in awe of the amount of work. I talked to one individual, I'll not mention the name, and I know there's one in here that's sitting here, I think, did the same thing. At the end of the day, just collapsed, went home, ate a bite, took a shower and went to bed. And every time I looked at there, I know how hot that field can be and that stadium can be. And there was two individuals out there in robes all day long. And that was impressive that they did that for those kids and the kids seemed to enjoy it. There was a personal touch to it that I hadn't seen before, you know, other than a large group. But I, I am so proud of our system for that and for everybody involved. I'm just glad we don't pay overtime. Because they put in hours of work and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McKinney. And I too will echo all those sentiments. I did the same. I watched on and off all day and was just so impressed with everything that took place, with the faculty and the staff members that were there to support the students, the students and their families. It just, even though it was a very long day and stretched out, it felt very personal and very up close, even sitting, watching it. So I echo that, but I am going to zero in on one person that I'd like to give my shout out to specifically. And that is to Mr. Joe Holt, who is seated behind me tonight. In our new normal, I have come to hate the word "social distancing," but it's something that we have to live with. And knowing that school systems have had to put that into place the way that we have, Mr. Holt has just been burning the midnight oil to get everything that has taken place in our school system at the end of the year properly recorded and videoed and placed on our Maroon Devil Network. So if you haven't had a chance, you should pull up the Maroon Devil Network and look at all the wonderful things that have happened even in our era of social distancing. So, Mr. Holt, thank you very much. We appreciate everything that you're doing for us and we appreciate everyone in our school system. Thank you.
So, Ms. Burns, I'm gonna recommend approval of the agenda with one addition. We received Friday, I believe it was, guidelines from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association so that we can begin a level of workouts for athletes this summer. It's gonna look different. Obviously, it's gonna follow the social distancing guidelines. But I would like to have a discussion about that in just a few minutes. Neil Blankenship is here to help guide us through that. I sent that to you later, earlier today. And I know that that was kind of a last minute, so some of you may not have that with you. I have a copy in my, in my material here that I'll be happy to share with you. That's it. But I would like to put that first under the discussion items, please. And then, if you would consider even giving a voice of approval to that so that we can begin in concert agreement on June the 15th. Other than that, I don't have anything to add to the agenda unless any of you do.
Do you may have anything else to add to the agenda? So...
So I recommend that we approve the agenda based on that. I'm sorry.
No, that's fine. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the addition? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Say aye, Lambert. That was unanimous.
So with that piece at the very beginning, I think it would be best if Neil take you through that document. I've got elements of it highlighted on mine, but I think that Neil knows this upside down and backwards. And while Neil's coming up, he knows it so well because Neil has been instrumental in helping design this. Now, there have been health officials and people in Raleigh of all sorts who have been involved. But Neil is on the Board of Directors for the High School Athletic Association and this has been a large undertaking for them. So Neil, lead us through the pieces of this that we need to know.
Well, we couldn't release it to you till today. We kinda had some insight, so that's why you didn't get it till this morning. But the big thing is, is that they're gonna allow us to start June 15th. If the LEAs in each county has their own that they can do. There are some counties that are hotspots that are gonna wait, but there are others that are ready to go. But as you've looked at the documented, we started with this about two weeks ago with three doctors on board. And we have a SMAC committee, Sports Medicine Committee down in Chapel Hill. And they took the NFHS guidelines and our guidelines and the governor's guidelines and they kinda meshed them together. And we went back and forth and shared with them. And then we came up with this and we met last week sometime, one night, and I can't remember what night we met. And we made some changes to our, of our own that we wanted. And then we came back and approved it and Friday and then it went out today to all the schools. So the big thing is this, is they're gonna allow us to start having workouts. You can have 25 total outside. You can have 10 total inside. That includes coaches and trainers. So if you have nine inside, you've got one coach, then that's what you've got. Or you have 25 total. It's 25 total period. And now, there's a lot of different guidelines to do there and there's a lot of verbiage in there that is hard to follow. And I'll answer any questions you have about that. But the big thing is, the point of emphasis is one. We've been, I've been working with Kerry, just so you know what we're doing here. I met with Kerry Powell today. We're gonna meet again next week to talk about, I mean, next couple of days to talk about how we're gonna attack this thing. I met with coaches today to introduce this so that once we get through here tonight, they can start contacting players and parents because there is a permission form, I think I left it up there for you, that we have to get signed. And then there's a checklist that we have to do every day with them. But with that, the parents have to sign a permission form. I think that's it right there. A permission form that they have to sign. And then there's a sheet that's with that, that every day they come, we have to take their temperature and ask them about eight questions. And if their temperatures are higher than 100.4, I think, then they are sent home.
That's 100.4?
Yeah, 100.4.
Not 104?
Yeah, 100.4.
It's a little difference.
Yeah, so they're sent home. So, you know, those things have to be done every day. They have to be documented. We have to keep up with those every day. Now with that, the way we're gonna attack it, just to give you an idea, we're gonna enter at one gate at the fieldhouse. When it's their time to start at 8:00 a.m., we're gonna go in the morning because we're gonna be outside. There's not a lot of sports-specific stuff you can do because you can only have one ball. And that ball is yours the whole time. And if you give it to somebody else, you gotta clean it. So what we're gonna do is we'll start at one end, checking them in. The same person has to check them in every morning because it's, so it's consistent. And then we, I purchased five infrared thermometers. He's purchased two for me because every place is gonna have to have them. And so that we can take their temperatures. And once we get that done, we get them in, they are supposed to stay six feet apart. Now, that's gonna be the hard part with teenage kids, keeping them six feet apart, but that is our goal. Once we get them inside, we will move down towards the multipurpose. We're gonna workout outside of it. And not go, we can't go indoors of it because all weight rooms are closed. And we will work out outside. We can use equipment, but it has to work like this. You have to put the kids in a group, in a pod, okay? And so it's either a four-person or five-person pod. They stay with that group every day. And there's a reason for that, is if somebody in that pod comes down with that, then that's the group that has to be tested or has to be quarantined for 14 to 15 days. So that's why you have to do that. And so, once they, once they get there, we put them there. They have to bring their own water. Locker rooms are closed. We'll have a restroom. We'll have a hand washing station. We'll have a hand sanitizer. We'll have the spray bottles. And basically, what we're gonna do is we're gonna invite 20 athletes on our campus. I'll have Kerry and we'll have four coaches. And that way, it's gonna take that many coaches to get everything clean. Because once a kid touches a piece of equipment and it's his turn to rotate off, he has to get hand sanitizer, then you have to wipe all that off, and then you start again. The max time is an hour and 30 minutes. And the reason we knocked it, it started out two hours. We knocked down an hour and 30 minutes because if we're outside, one, it's gonna be warm. Two, kids haven't done anything for a long time. This first phase is just to start getting them in shape. So if they do go inside, they have to keep their ball and they still need to keep their six foot apart. The stuff still has to be cleaned the same. And so you go from there. Now, our plan here is this right now. Volleyball and some girl sports that are doing conditioning, if they're not doing anything that way, or if it's a softball player that wants to do conditioning, we're gonna send them to West because we can have multiple sessions and not have the same thing. So we're gonna send them to West and that way they'll have a place for restrooms and stuff there. It keeps a lot more people off campuses. We're gonna do cheerleading at East and then we'll use the two gyms for our basketball for the month of June. And then once we get back from our dead period, we'll use those two gyms for volleyball if the phases change. And so that's where we're at with that. There is no body-to-body contact. Football, we can't put any equipment on. You're basically just trying to start getting in shape. It's the big step. I mean, it's like one of the principals said on the board, his biggest thing, he just wants to see how it goes because we're gonna have to do this every day at school too. So this is kinda like a, let's see how this goes so we can learn from it. That y'all will be the guinea pigs for it, I guess, for what they're saying for us. So, you know, that's, that's where we're gonna be with that. But it is a big step. I know we got kids excited. They're, they're ready to go. Parents are excited and ready to go. We got coaches excited, ready to go. So, but with that, it's gonna be a learning experience. But like I said, if somebody was to come down with it, then their group is quarantined or until they are tested. Once they are tested and they're cleared, then they can come back.
So I was gonna ask about that. So if, if an athlete shows up and we scan them and they're 100.4 and we say, "You gotta go home," do they then have to bring something back?
They have to bring something back. It's in there. There's, there's different steps that they have to... There's different steps they have to go. They have to not, either not have a temperature for so long.
Right.
And yet without, you know, without medication. And then they would have to go to the doctor and get checked and we would have to have release from a doctor with no saying if they are clear.
And they can be tested over here at the urgent care again tonight?
Yes.
I think they can.
Yeah, I think that's the last I heard. That's what, that's what I was told that that was for. Because, I mean, that's something, you know, we're gonna deal with. That's where we're stuck on phase two and three with the High School Athletic Association right now is, is, you know, what if this team in the season gets a person and they refuse to play? You know, what are we gonna do? But that's questions we'll answer down the road. This phase will go into our dead period July 4th week. And then the High School Athletic Association will send out some questions for the ADs to answer. How'd it go? Did you have anybody test positive? How'd you handle it? What can we do better? And then we'll look at phase two, but we can't plan phase two until we get anything from the governor on our next step on, if the number's gonna go up. And the big issue right now with the governor is the body-to-body contact. So I don't know where we'll be with that yet. So we can't even send out phase two or begin to work on that yet.
Another element that's on this is there are no spectators during phase one.
Yes, there are no spectators during phase one. If a parent show up, they have to stay outside the fenced area or in their cars. And what we're gonna do is we'll dismiss our athletes out a different gate because the next phase will start coming in and that way they're not crossing each other and try to send them home. All our coaches are supposed to be writing up their plan and sharing it with me and Kerry about how they're gonna do it and kinda draw us a picture of what it's gonna look like at their school. And that way we'll keep all that on file.
I did, I glanced over that just before it came up, but on the spectators, if I remember or if I read it correctly, they can't even, I mean, even though they may be outside the fence, they cannot congregate on the fence. They pretty much gotta stay in their car or social distance themselves in the parking lot, whatever.
They want them in their car.
In their car.
You know, you're gonna have some issues where you're going up through the middle school and our JVs may be out there working out there where we got that road there, you know. But we've got plans that we're gonna shut those two gates. And then once that group starts, we'll shut the bottom gate.
Yeah.
And that way, we can take care of our own. We can tell them and that's what we're gonna do. We'll take care of our own that way. So it is strongly suggested that coaches and trainers wear masks. We will wear masks for sure when we are checking them in because we were real close to them then. And then when we're out, if we're not around them, we can pull it down then, but we will have masks for that.
It's also suggested that athletes not wear masks while they're working out. And I think that's a, that's a statement that needs to be made for our public.
Yeah. Well, we've already had a case in the United States somewhere where an athlete wore a mask and was working out and had some difficulties. So I think that caused that to come off.
One question. Status of Kerry.
Don't know the status of Kerry as far as Duke LifePoint's concerned right now. With this, with this documentation, this guidance, she really needs to be there. Even though it does say on the first page that it's strongly encouraged. There are some other places where if someone becomes ill, I just said that the trainer, certified trainer, needs to be there to take care of that person. So I think that it's time for us to have a very heart-to-heart conversation with Duke LifePoint and have them tell us what their intent is. And Jerry, if their intent is to do something other than what we want, then we're gonna have to make arrangements to take care because we are required by law to have an athletic trainer. So somehow, I guess we're gonna have to take that out of your salary.
I've already sent the information to the head trainer that's over them. He has it. I called him two weeks ago, probably when I shouldn't have, and told him that this is a possibility of happening so they can start preparing. They know, so we'll see where it goes from there. But, I mean, it's, she's very important for what we do and she helps me with setting up this plan with this right here, so.
I'll be glad to call Steve if you're open to it tomorrow.
Well, it would be, I think it would be wise for us to, I personally believe, if we called him together so that we can have a unified front on that. I'm pretty sure that Steve is gonna be supportive of what we do.
He is, but he takes his orders out of management, doesn't he?
I know.
That's the thing that scares me.
Well, that, this training is a, is a problem across the state right now. I do know that other counties are having major issues right now with that.
Well, there are other health systems, I'll say this openly, there are other health systems in western North Carolina and I wouldn't mind to be knocking on their door. Party supplies trainers, as I don't know if Mission, whoever they work for, is supplying trainers now or not.
I really, Mission, again, taking over, these four profit companies don't look at the community the same way as not-for-profits. They really don't. There's the bottom line. But they get referrals. And yeah, that's, that's something that I would... I don't have a problem mentioning that to Steve because he knows I have before. But Steve, it's, he's on, he's with us, but again, he's...
I understand. And if we need to, we'll do what we need to do.
We're gonna start off, once, if we get approval, we'll start putting stuff out on our social media about getting kids signed up for times. And that's the way we'll do it. That way we can keep them in their, their little pods, you know, for time. And we'll do as many sessions as we need to do. We're gonna try to keep it in the morning just because it's cooler and that helps us with the heat because they have to bring their own water. And we supply, well, we can refill their water bottles, but we have to have one person. That's their job, is refilling water bottles. So that's a big thing. As of right now, in phase one, there is no travel. So that, there is no, we're not going anywhere. We're not allowed to go anywhere. So there is no travel right now. I don't know what it may look like in phase two, but as of right now, there is no travel.
You still have a dead period, that third week of July too?
No, the third week of July dead period has been pulled. And the reason we pulled it, we kept the July 4th one because it's a holiday week and vacations and stuff there. And we talked about people already having vacation for the third week, but to get through our phases, to get to August first, we felt like we needed that week. And we didn't really, since the coaches clinic was canceled, we just felt like it was important that we keep that week and that way we can keep moving on.
So what I understand right now, Neil, is there are gonna be two weeks of training and two dead weeks?
Well, it'll be one dead week.
One dead week.
Yep. And then during that time, we'll do an evaluation and then we'll start our meetings online to start putting things together for phase two.
Have any other questions for Neil?
So this phase is July, well, as far as the first phase?
This phase is June 15th until that week of the dead period, which is June... Yeah, I think we got two weeks straight. And then we go into a dead period for July 4th week. And it goes from there, but let me make sure I got any more notes. I think that's it.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Is it, this just for fall sports at this point in time?
No. It's, it's all any athlete. And we talked about that. There were some counties that were gonna just do it for fall sports to kinda keep their numbers down. But we felt like that was unfair to... The spring sport coaches didn't get to see their kids a lot already. And then the basketball coaches didn't get to see theirs. And these kids, the coaches wanna see their kids. And we just felt like that was a big thing, that we just wanted to open it up to all. And then, and then, and then for us, it didn't affect us a lot because our kids are trisport athletes. If they play one, they play multiple. But in some counties, it's still different.
So like, just as an example, like Maddie's girls soccer?
Yes.
So they would meet, just find a location and meet according to these rules?
Yes. Yeah, I think they're gonna use the rec park. I think that's where they're gonna go. They're gonna go, they're gonna go to the rec park.
And there's enough facilities for each sport?
I think we've gotten spread out pretty good. I think he'll do a session for the boys. If he has too many, then he'll do two sessions with each one.
Sounds like you'll be at the school a lot.
Yes.
Got a camper on your truck.
So.
Thank you.
And we've, and we've got, we've got the Clorox just for the cleaning stuff. And, and we've got, I think our hand sanitizer came in. Our thermometer should be here this week. So it's just gonna be, it's gonna be an added expense because evidently this is gonna be the new, new. And I mean, even when we're able to get back in the weight room, that stuff's gonna have to be wiped down probably every day now. And probably after every class.
Yep.
So, you know, the big thing is, you know, is the new norm, that's figuring it out as we go.
I just, just a random question, it's not important, but could, could some of the weight apparatuses be brought outside for them to do certain things?
We're gonna bring certain equipment from the middle school. We're not gonna take our new equipment outside. We ain't have to use it indoors yet. We're not gonna take it outside yet. So we're gonna keep it indoors, but we're, we're gonna go to the middle school and get theirs. And we're trying to find some jump ropes and stuff like that, stuff that you can use. And when you get done, you can spray it off with the, the water and the solution stuff to clean it pretty easy. So this is more, phase two, the first two phases are just more about us getting our kids back in shape. There won't be a lot of practice skill stuff. It's more about us trying to get our kids active again, so.
The assumption is that these students have not been as active for the past four or five months now. So we've gotta get them acclimated, or they had to get them acclimated again.
Yes, as far as competitiveness for, once the things start, everybody's in the same boat.
Yes. It'll be different.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
I got one comment. I'm glad we've got Neil in this position in a situation like this. I have total confidence in what it is to be done, exactly the way you said it's gonna be done. And I appreciate that. And I know it will be, but, and we're fortunate there, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We all agree with that. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
When we get to the, pardon? I said, "Appreciate that." When we get to the action points, I'll be asking y'all to approve that start date. Because of the way that it's written from the High School Athletic Association, that needs to be a part of what we do, if you would, please.
Oh, I did have one question. You, you mentioned NHFS. What is that?
National, National Federation of High School Sports.
It's a, it's the National Federation.
NHFS.
Yes. It's where our, it's where our rulebooks come from. They set up all the rules. And then they gave us guidelines. They sent out something about a month ago, I guess, about guidelines on where to start with this stuff because there were certain states that already started. And so they had to have something, you know, and they recommend, you don't have to follow all of them, but they recommend. North Carolina follows a lot of those through their High School Athletic Association. I know some, I know, I think Oklahoma or somebody didn't. They opened back up, no restrictions. There's some schools and states that did that, you know, so, you know, it's just the way it is. But we follow those pretty closely in our association, so.
Thank you.
You have in your pack Board Policy 7560, which we looked at last time. Primarily that policy, which is up for second reading tonight, has to do with the need for deductions for absences. I believe that it's placed in here right now as part of the COVID policy group that was given to us because there is the potential for unplanned absence that might be immediate due to illness or something else. And so the North Carolina, is it the School Board Association that sends that to us? They sent this with, with that group because they felt that we needed a different level of coverage. There's nothing, in my opinion, that is concerning in that policy. I would just tell you that I hope we never have to use it, you know, because it really is an emergency. You know, because it really is an emergency event that would cause these things to come into play. Do you have any questions about that policy? The next time that we meet on June 30th, I'll have probably three other primary policies that will have come back from our legal team for you to look at as well. So that night's going to be fairly important for us, I think. Stephanie wants to come and talk to us about budget amendments and also the North Carolina School Board Trust Agreement. So Stephanie, would you take over?
Just on the North Carolina School Board Trust agreements, I just have to have the superintendent and the board chair sign those agreements. We do get our insurance through the North Carolina School Board Trust. And as part of that, there is a participation agreement that just must be signed every year. So unless you have any questions, there's nothing really to approve. It's just letting you know that I'll be getting the board chair to sign that tonight. We do get our errors and omissions and general liability from the School Board Trust, our workers' comp, and our auto and inland marine coverage. Tonight, I'll just need her to sign for the E and O and the general liability and then the auto and inland marine. We haven't gotten our workers' comp quotes yet, so. The other thing would be the budget amendments. There wasn't a whole lot for the first of the month. There'll probably be more to come the end of the month. In the state public school fund, really probably the biggest thing is just moving around the budget by purpose code. And then we did do an ABC transfer from our small county funds of $30,000 to transportation to cover the remainder of the expenditures that we anticipate for the remainder of the year for that. Other than that, it was just a transfer in between purpose codes. For Fund Two, our local current expense, I did reduce that budget by $85,000. Our fines and forfeiture were already down. And then with the court system closing, it's going to be even further reduced. So I reduced it by $80,000 and offset would be to reduce the public utilities expense by that amount. And we'll just wind up paying that out of our Fund Eight for our special revenue fund. Federal Grants Fund, the biggest thing there was we did receive our federal funds for the COVID CARES Act, K-12 Emergency Relief Funding. We received $364,373. And we got a budget put in by June the 1st in order to be able to receive our allotment this current year. So otherwise, it could have been as late as December just because they have a blackout period where they don't do allotments. So we've got that submitted. A lot of that was just dispersed, one for psychologists, one for tech, instructional tech support. And then we had some funding for COVID supplies just because we know we're going to need additional supplies. And then also, we did, we've already submitted a budget amendment to transfer some more money into some, for transportation to deliver meals for June, so. The special revenue fund, hardly anything. There was just a small adjustment that I had to make on that for our PAT program of $5,782. And that's it for the budget amendments. Do you all have any questions about those?
We didn't anything yet about next year's impact Monday. But any thinking out of PC on that?
We did get a projection. I don't have that with me. It was really about what we had this year with us, probably, I think it's what, $100,000, maybe less than this year, but this year was down about $300,000 from the previous year, so. Just based on our numbers right now. And we don't know about the 7002, which is the portion for the land yet. That's just based on our federally impacted students, that amount, so. The other thing that I was going to discuss tonight was as part of our board policy, I think it's 6420, yes, 6420, which is contracts with the board. It states that the finance officer is to review our lease agreements. And also, as part of that, I brought forth to you our installment financing contracts. We do have a copier lease agreement with TIA for 38 copiers. That was a 60-month lease that started September of 2018. And our monthly payment amounts are $2,557.09. Our first payment was November of '18 and we have 41 payments remaining. That is just an operating lease. At the end of that term, then we'll redo a new lease for copiers. Also, we have the Chromebook lease. That's with Trinity Three Financial Services. That was a 48-month term. And that was for 900 Chromebooks. And that began in July of 2019. And we pay $5,460.21 per month for that. Our first payment was in July of '19 and we have 37 payments remaining on that. And then finally, the installment financing contract, which is for our energy savings contract. The loan did close March 10th of 2020, which you're aware of, for $2,348,196. And that term is for 228 months. The payment amounts on that vary just because it lines up with the project. Our first payment is due April the 10th of 2021. There'll be 215 payments. Even though there's 228 months, there's only 215 payments. I know that looks like a mistake, but it's not. To date, it has accrued interest of $9,555.12. So our current balance is $2,404,906 as of May 30th. So just to let you know that.
We have, I received information from Snyder about the timeline for that process. We're still kind of negotiating that timeline just a little bit. The pandemic has slowed things down a little bit and it has, I have a little concern, but I have a Google Meet meeting with Graham and the project coordinator tomorrow to make sure that their timeline meets our school timeline. Because we don't need them replacing burners in heaters in November. I don't think that's a wise move. So we'll bring that to you shortly and share that with you, okay? Also received verbal, oh, what's the word I want? I can't think of my words tonight. I spoke with Kevin King and he has... That, well, I wouldn't say it's approval. I would just say that it's, he has kind of guaranteed that we will see no reduction in our local funding.
Oh, that's awesome.
Which I seriously appreciate him being willing to say that. And he also said that in a commissioners' meeting a week or two ago. As to the quarter cent sales money, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm so afraid to say something without having a number in front of me, they've appropriated $400,000 for that next year. And that should be accurate based on what we have received this calendar year. Before the pandemic kicked in, there had already been about $300,000 accumulated in that.
Wow, that's awesome.
Which is exactly what they had appropriated last year as a front-loading for us, kind of. Now, you have to remember, though, that for the next couple of years, $170,000 of that is going to come out and help pay for the bond, not the bond, but the loan for the high school. Now, once some of that debt service rolls off, then all of that quarter cent sales money will be coming for capital needs. So, you know, that's the best that we can do right now.
Well, I mean, the $170,000 is going towards capital needs anyway. I mean, and that's how we said we were going to spend the money.
Right.
You know, where we were starting was with capital needs. So we're doing that and accomplishing it.
I'm just grateful that the number is growing for us. And I'm really thankful that the commissioners and Kevin are being totally upfront and doing what they said they would do.
Yeah.
And I know that's what we're looking for, so I thank them for that. We'll be, you'll be voting on those budget amendments in just a little bit, okay? We've got the calendar in front of you. This is the final revision for now. Did you hear I said that?
For now.
This is the final revision for now. At the top of the calendar, I need you to see that the calendar is subject to change.
With little to no notice.
It was recommended. Well, I'll enlarge it for our old eyes. But the, our regional DPI rep has recommended that we put that in there for right now because there can still be changes. The important piece to recognize in this calendar is there are 178 instructional days. 171 of those are required for us to accumulate 1,025 hours. Plus, according to the new law, we have to have five full instructional days. So that puts us at 176. We have two more days in there. So we have accomplished the goal. And the beautiful thing to me is those remote instruction days that are listed for POC and teacher work days count as instructional hours also. So we're actually getting to count instructional hours for teacher work days. That's kind of nice.
That's great.
And at the bottom of that, or somewhere in there, you will see optional remote learning days. We put those in on next June 7th through June 11th. Those are not part of the teachers' contracts. So if we use them, it's to our benefit. If we don't use them, they just go away. Makes sense? The teachers don't have to work those days. There are 215 days in their contract actually in on June 4th. Okay? And all of this has been approved by our regional case manager through DPI. He says it looks good. Do you have any questions about anything on that calendar?
Optional work days, on those days, if you use them, where are you going to find funds to pay?
Which ones?
6th, June the 7th to 11th.
They're not working. Those would be slid into a weather day. So if we have snow, we can call one of those optional remote learning days and the students will be able to work remotely.
I thought, I remember you saying something like that.
And we get instructional hours that way. So a snow day counts as instructional hours. Now, we're going to be careful with those, Jerry, because we have to make sure that our students have their remote learning in their hands when they leave the building, you know?
Yeah, we can't call it at 6:00 AM on a morning that we didn't have some planning.
If we get a blizzard overnight, then it's just going to be a snow day.
Right.
You know, and we've built in work days for that also. But if I see that weather's coming and it looks like we're going to be impacted the next day, we'll say, everybody take your books home because we might have remote learning day tomorrow or we might not. It just depends.
Couldn't you just have like an emergency work packet that you give them ahead of time to take home just in case?
Yes, we can, Lambert, and that's going to be one of the pieces that we're going to, that we're going to ask teachers to have in place. One of the pieces, though, that I want to make sure is that it's not busy work.
Right, yeah, I understand that.
One of the, I guess, complaints that we've received in a survey that we send home to parents is that some of the work that we had during remote learning came across as busy work. And parents became pretty adept at that. And since the grading policy had already been established, they said, that's busy work, you don't have to do it, you know? Now, not all parents did that, but we want to make sure that what the students are doing relates to what's in the curriculum for that time span. So Lambert, what we'll do in our remote learning plan, which I'll bring to you someday, in June, I think, oh, this is June, isn't it? In July, I don't even know what month it is, Stephanie. Is we're going to make sure that those emergency plans you're talking about are kept up to date with what the students are doing in the classroom somehow. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, yeah, it does, yeah.
But you're right, it could be an emergency packet. Any other questions? We'll be asking you to approve that in just a little while. We have a CCIP report, and I don't remember what CCIP stands for. But Regina is, she's over here rolling her eyes at me. Regina is live.
Hi, Regina.
Hey, folks, hope you're all doing well.
Hello, we are, hope you are too.
CCIP, Consolidated Continuous Improvement Plan, but what it really is, is it's the application platform for all of our federal programs like Title I, Title II, Title 4A, Title 5B, which is, you know, the pots of money that we operate all kinds of things with. And DPI just opened that platform for us to see what was required of us for the applications this morning at 8:00 AM. So it was originally due on June 30th, so I was going to just ask you guys for permission to submit everything that we needed to submit and take copies of it because I didn't think you'd be meeting again before I probably had it done at the last minute. But today, they extended our due date till the end of July. So you might actually meet again and see it. But I would like to have permission from you guys to go ahead and do the work and get the plan submitted so that we can get the, oh, let's see. Somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000 in those programs.
Absolutely. Yes, do it, go for it.
If you guys have questions or want to know more about it or a breakdown, I can tell you what I know right now. But I also know that one of the allocations, I've already told us, it's going to be changed a little bit, hopefully, but, and Mark, you had a question?
I was going to ask, I don't know that the board has to give an official approval on that. You're just kind of letting them know this is where we are and they're going to give you a thumbs up, keep going, right?
Right.
Okay.
It's on the agenda and that's, I mean, they usually, on the plan, they say, was your board aware of this or whatever, what date kind of thing, so.
So you can honestly say, yes, we were aware and we're in full support. Do it.
I appreciate that.
Well, we appreciate everything that you do. Goodness, we couldn't function without you taking care of these grants and all this for us, so thank you.
You might be a good replacement, but thank you.
So don't we have something due Friday?
I'm sorry, again.
Do we have something due Friday?
We have the SRO grant due Friday.
So we better start writing.
We're starting to write.
She's probably got it done.
We'll get it.
Yeah, we'll get it. All right, Regina, thank you very much, ma'am. You're welcome to leave if you want to, or you can sit there and look at me. She left.
That fast, huh?
The next piece on the agenda is personnel.
My internet cut off, I did not...
But really, that was perfect timing because I said, you can sit there and look at me and it went blank. It was perfect.
Yeah, you're starting to freeze and I'm like, I'm not okay.
All right, thanks, Regina. She's gone now.
No, she's gone.
There was something about personnel that I wanted to share with you, okay? And we can go into closed session, but I wanted to put this in the record in open session. We're going to pay our supplement to our coaches differently next year. We, I learned this year that if we have a shutdown, we lose athletics. And that means that although our coaches are very valuable and I want them to have everything that they're worth, if we're not having practice and we're not having ball games, then in my opinion, I need to be more careful with how we use our funding, particularly right now when we're looking at some funding shortfall possibilities. And so for the next school year, I want to use a three-part plan for paying our coaches. The first part is if they sign a contract, they're guaranteed 25% of their supplement. And that supplement, that 25% will be paid halfway through their sports season. So if a baseball coach signs a contract, they will receive 25% just for signing, but it won't happen until half of the baseball season is over. Does that make sense? Does that make sense? And if they stay with us and we have a season and they complete half of that season, they'll get another 25% at that time as well. So by the end, by, by the middle of the season, they will have received 50% of their, their supplement. You see how that works? And then if they complete the season, then they get the other 50%. That way, we're, we, I believe that we're managing our finances better and we're rewarding our coaches for being willing to coach, but at the same time, we're protecting ourselves just a little bit. Does that make sense to you?
Very smart.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay? Y'all have, do y'all have any comments or thoughts about that?
I have a lot of concern about some of the coaches that, you know, some of the football coaches' supplements are nice. I mean, so you, you're talking about $200 a month in some, a lot of cases. Are they, is that gonna fit within their budget, 'cause a lot of your young coaches that are on a tight budget.
I, I can't answer that question. The reason that I wanted to go ahead and, and make that information available now is so that they could set their budgeting up to follow that. I, I have a, a difficulty paying someone for something, though, that doesn't happen.
Oh, I agree with that point, yeah.
You know? And, but I understand what you're saying about the budgeting piece. I don't, I don't know any other way to do it, Jerry, other than just admit that if we continue to pay coaches on a, a monthly basis, like we have been for some, for a lot of them, then we'll just have to agree that we're going to not be able to recover that money if we don't have a season, because that's already built into their, their pay plan.
Yeah, I understand that, that part of it. But I, but at the same time, I'm still concerned about, you know, like, middle football season, they, they start in August, and they're not gonna get paid till mid-September?
Probably so, mid-season, yes.
As opposed to baseball, you've got a lot shorter season, and some of those sports are much shorter in length.
Mm-hmm.
And that, whether or not that's, uh, would be hard on some of the younger coaches in particular.
So I'm, I'm, I'm open to you all saying that that's not a good plan, and if you think that's not a good way to operate, I'll put it away.
But I'm just saying, is it possible to pay them that half in inst, in, in increments up to that point, because they're committing, once they sign to a certain amount, they're committing to be there. That's my one concern. I, I, I think the idea might be good, because if you start a season and you're paid for a whole season and you only practice three weeks and then you go home, I, I, I agree with that part, yeah. I mean, that's just, that's just fact of life.
I don't know of any other solutions for that. Do you have any ideas, Stephanie?
I would say, if it's hard, like, I mean, based on season, you still have spring coaches, that, you know, there's still be spring, or they're gonna get anything.
Well, even then, I don't, do we pay spring coaches starting in September?
If they're employed by us, we take their full coaching supplement and split it up to.
I was thinking about the season itself. I mean, if you got a coach that's coaching, well, most of your spring sports, it is, I mean, they're not paid near as much because the season's shorter and it, not as much time demand of them. So, yeah, I would not have any problems at all if they start their pay March 1st, whenever they start, rather than Sep, August or September, or September in this case. But some of the others where you're a lot, a lot more time involved, I mean, if football coaches are putting in a lot of hours during the week before they can get the first game.
Would, would it be possible, taking what, what Jerry just said, Stephanie, would it be possible to? Let, let, let Stephanie and I talk about this some more before we put it in play.
So I, I think maybe one suggestion that I would just, would it be possible to pay them the first 25% when they sign the contract? And then, but, I mean, and I'm sure this gets real tricky for you from the funding's perspective. And then the second 25% halfway through, and then the final payment when the season's over. I, I mean, I don't know, and I'm, I'll be real careful with what I'm, try to be real careful and not, I don't want to seem insensitive or uncaring or unconcerned in any way, shape, or form about any staff member that we have that's involved in our school system. And, and we try to say it over and over again, how much we appreciate everything that they do and, and the commitment that they have to our system and to our students and to whatever their extracurricular activity might be. But I feel like our commitment and our first responsibility is to the fiscal responsibility of this school system. That, that's where we have to say we're going to try to protect that at, 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 to the best of our ability. And people have to, we just, we all have to learn to budget. And, and one of the things that I can't say that I've done with a great deal of regularity, but one of the things that we've tried to teach our daughters is you only budget on what you know you have, what you absolutely know you have. So as a teacher, when you sign that contract, you know you have your teacher's salary, and then anything else is, is an addition to that. So, and, and I don't want that to seem callous or unconcerned, I don't, but when, when we have a school system who are losing Impact Aid dollars, those monies are going down, we're losing gate money because seasons aren't happening, we're increasing our expenses because we've got to buy hand sanitizer and this long list of COVID supplies that, you know, will just be endless. Mr. Blankenship, Coach Blankenship was talking about that, just the expense that it's going to cost the athletic department to mark off the six-foot distancing signs and, and to do all of those things. So we just, we have to be very, very, very careful and tighten up in, in every way that we can, so.
And I don't, I don't want to, I don't want any of this to sound or to come across like I'm, I'm not supportive of the athletic program of the coaches. That's not my, my intent in any way.
Mine either, mine either.
And I, but I want every, and, and I know you all don't think that either, but I wanna make sure that, because the coaches are gonna hear this and they're gonna think that, that I'm coming out after them, and I'm not. What I know is happening, though, is we're seeing decreasing revenue in so many places, and it's hitting our local budget. It's ma, it may not, it may not impact necessarily the, the operational funding that's coming from the county, but we pay for so many things out of Impact Aid. And, and we're looking, we've already looked at $300,000 loss, we're looking at another $100,000 loss, and there is, there is no guarantee of what the federal government's gonna do after this pandemic with all of the money that's come out from up there. I mean, we're talking trillions of dollars. And one of the pieces that has been on the chopping block over and over and over again is Impact Aid. And so I'm just, a, and the expenses that we're, we're putting into a lot of things, we have to replace the drainage underneath the baseball field right now. And that's gonna be tens of thousands of dollars. You know, we, we have a, we have a new lawnmower that we have to buy because the one that we're working, we're using isn't working anymore. I'm just trying to be responsible fiscally, that's all.
You think it would help if, if they split this up?
Pay people if they're not doing the job. You know, and, and I know it's not their fault that, you know, if we have another pandemic and, and they, they can't, uh, then they're, you know, schools canceled, then we don't do sports, but, you know, we can't, we can't afford to pay people for something if they're not doing, if they're teachers, they're still teaching, you can't do a coaching virtually, so I think that, you know, plan's great, Mark.
Travis, what were you saying?
It may also help, I'm just thinking, you know, if, if you got fall coaches, split it up four ways, I mean, maybe 25% August, September, October, and at least split it up four, that way they're not waiting on that 50% at the end.
Is, is that a possibility, Stephanie?
And then the spring, maybe just split it up four months.
Is that a possibility? So we would de, we would decrease the amount of time in between the payments for the fall coaches because those seasons are so long?
I didn't know if that was possible, I just thought it might help them, but, I don't know.
Right now, you're, you're saying they're getting their supplement over 10 months.
Over 10 months, right.
And now we're talking about.
They actually complete the season, but it's spread out.
Right.
For fall coaches, particularly.
So pay them, pay them during the season as long as the season continues to move forward? Is that a possibility? Okay. I'm just, I'm just thinking about the accounting pieces of it, 'cause that is way outside of my life.
So now, what do we do with the, uh, with the supplements for the people who didn't coach their spring?
We ask them to do some extra, some extra duties as a coach outside of their regular time. Other than that, Lambert, we just continue to pay them because we had already made a commitment to them, and we felt like the pandemic wasn't their fault. And that's one of the, that's one of the things that's caused me to think about this. I understand both sides of that argument. And particularly, well, that, I think that's probably as far as that, that conversation with me needs to go anyhow right now.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Um, we're, we're, we've tried to treat people fairly, and sometimes we have probably, we've gone more than the extra mile to take care of people during the pandemic. People, our, many of our staff have been making more than they regularly make because we've been able to do that.
Right, yeah.
But we can't.
We can't keep.
We can't continue to do that.
I don't have an absolute no problem with the concept of that, I really don't. Every sport's a little different on how they're paid and how much they're paid. That, you know, the simple, I just want, you know, maybe.
And, and I, I understand what you're saying, Jerry, and appreciate that. You, you mentioned football having a long season, but I think about wrestling. Wrestling probably has the longest season of any sport in, in the district right now, and that could be troublesome there. So what Stephanie and I will do is we will look at a, a, a payment plan that will be within the season. I know that it's gonna create a, a, a little more work, and, and I'm sorry, I hate that, I really do. I really do, because you work so hard already. But we, we have to have an understanding that if a season is canceled, then we can no longer pay that contract because we just can't afford it anymore. I love the coaches.
And that needs to be, that needs to be in our contract upfront.
It will be. It will, and I, I spoke with Stephanie about that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you're right, it needs to be upfront. And to all the coaches, please hear my heart. I'm not trying, I'm not standing against athletics or anybody else, that's not my point.
Well, it's not just athletics either, I mean, we've got an ensemble and band and, you know, I mean, it's extracurriculars.
There's, there's a, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna jump off too deeply in another direction right now, but we have to consider the fact that we're entering into a new phase of education right now, where we're getting ready to have to supply three different educational instructional plans, just in case we don't, we aren't able to be face-to-face all the time. And there are school systems in North Carolina right now who are creating virtual academies that their, their students can opt into going virtually to school and not going to class at all. And it's go, it's just an option for them. And I can see the day coming where if we don't have something like that, we're gonna lose students to go to school in other counties across the state. And that's gonna cost us money, and it's gonna lose us teachers. Do you hear what I'm saying? And so I'm, I'm seeing all those pieces and I'm thinking, as your superintendent, I've gotta be financially responsible to take care of our staff and our students, and this is a way that I can move in that direction. That's my only goal, yes.
Come first, you know, our, you know, whereas the status is top priority first, in order to keep the school system going, we have to make the school system be the priority.
It, it's a whole package.
Yeah, yeah.
So Stephanie, I'll work on that, okay?
Oh, yeah.
And we'll, and we'll use that, we'll use those guidelines, I, I agree with it. We'll find a way to do that.
I'm gonna make Gary come and help you on that, which he's the one that's got a problem with.
That's okay, Stephanie, I got that. We got it. Okay?
Turn him off.
Turn him off. Unplug him.
Okay, so, do you, does, do any of you feel a, a need to go into, what's it called?
Closed session.
Closed session?
I do not.
Anyone? Lambert, do you feel like we need to go to closed session?
No.
Okay.
No.
Cause I'll just, I'll take your little computer right on back there. I think that moves us through all the discussion that we need to be having, and we can move into action now, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So for the first action item, I would recommend, as a personnel recommendation, that the Swain County Board of Education employ Amelia Almond as a teacher at Swain County High School, effective August 10th, 2020. Her background check has come back, and she's clear.
Wonderful.
She's worked for us before, okay? And she's finally decided that she needs to come home.
Yay.
Can I have a recommendation, I mean, a approval on that?
So move.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Lambert says?
Lambert, do, Lambert agrees.
That was unanimous.
And I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Sean McCarthy as a teacher at Swain High School, effective August 10th, 2020. His background check, I don't believe, has come through yet, so this would be pending background check.
Motion.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Lambert.
That was unanimous, yes.
It was unanimous. I recommend the Swain County Board of Education hire the coaches as listed on the sheet.
Do I have a recommendation? Or a motion, sorry.
Can I just ask a question, not long ago, about how Kerry's situation works there?
That is a, that's a coaching, that's a coaching supplement that is separate from the salary that she has been receiving from Duke life point. And I believe, I don't know how that's paid, I don't remember. And I think that's a personnel issue that probably could be discussed.
Yeah, yes. So do you have a motion to approve the coaches as listed?
I'll make a motion to approve the coaches that are listed.
Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, one thought. A little I need you about approving spring coaches when spring's not here yet. Back to what you just said. And, and I think Lambert, what he said about putting some of that in the contract would be good, of course, we don't wanna hire somebody and then we don't have that sport. Cause there is, I mean, high school or colleges are dropping these non-revenue sports right and left. And I hate that thought, because I'd like to have a dozen more of them to keep kids involved, but I did, that did concern me, you know, that. Example, might be a JV team. We may not have a JV team in any sport after, in winter and spring.
And, and there are many sports right now where there are not enough teams.
Right.
That have JVs to really have good competition. I think we've seen that in the past couple of years. But, and that's one of the reasons that I wanted to go to a different payment plan, because then if there's not a sport, then we're not obligated to pay.
Right.
So that's what we need to do, is kind of, it might, may have to wait and see what you and Stephanie work out, to whether we approve every one of these coaches at this time, depending on when they're getting paid. I mean, this was for, if they got paid every paycheck, right?
Yes.
And that might change, I don't know.
When did they sign the contracts? Like, at the beginning of their season or now, at the beginning?
Most of them are not, just because the fall sports, they'll start, you know, a lot harder, people sort of believe that they, this will be our, not starting the contract, so.
If we're gonna modify the contracts to reflect the new payment plan, then you could still hire them with that understanding of. could still hire them with the understanding of the payment plan being set forth, the new one, as the season goes with the season being paid.
And there's, there's another piece to consider about this also, and that is we have coaches who even though we're not going to be able to travel in the first phase of the athletic reopening, that's only, that first phase is only probably going to last until the first week of July, second week of July. And at that point, they may be able to travel. And we've got winter coaches that do summertime travel, you know?
Yeah, multiple sports.
Yeah, they do. And so I understand what you're saying and I'm not disagreeing. I think this is a really, this is a tenuous and a difficult position. There's another piece to consider, and that is if a coach is agreeing to, to coach, then we need to at least let them know that we are seriously interested in them doing that and standing with them on that. And that's one of the reasons that I said if we, if we did a 25% of, and not necessarily pay them upfront, but because they've signed a contract, there's a 25% of the supplement that will be coming to them during that season.
Regardless, regardless, simply based on the fact that they signed the contract.
Well, in that case, I think we should, I mean, I, I feel like we should go ahead and approve for all these coaches. Because a lot of them do coach multiple sports also, so.
Well, we're talking about girls soccer, probably going to get together this summer. That, that benefits kids.
Yes.
So your plan looks better every, every minute. It does. I mean, given, like, I hadn't thought about that, that a lot of these coaches that work in the summer helping these kids, and I'd hate to hang them out there. That makes sense.
And I recognize, Jerry, that every coach doesn't put the same type of, of time and energy into what they're doing because the people are different. But at the same time, I just feel like we need to show our coaches that, that we do understand, we do appreciate, but at the same time, we've got to be fiscally responsible.
Right.
So now, if, if, if y'all decide that you don't want to approve the spring coaches, we got, we have to go back to the person that made the motion and there has to be, there has to be a change to the motion.
I'll stick with the motion. I'll, I'll go with the motion we had.
Stick with the motion. So Stephanie, who made the motion?
Kim.
Kim.
I didn't. Lambert second.
Okay, so.
I second, yeah.
Yeah. I'm trying to be a good Roberts Rules of Order parliamentarian here.
So let me ask...
Well, I think if we, if we do the new payment plan, the spring coaching schedule will be taken care of.
I, that's part of what I had in mind, not the primary piece, but it, it just seems to solve a lot of concerns and is, is fair.
Exactly, yes, I bet.
Any other?
There was one, one question that I had.
Yes.
On the, on the coaching list?
Yes.
There were some blank, there were some blanks.
That's because we, we don't have coaches for those yet.
Okay, one, well, like, one thing that I wondered was, let me see if I can find that. We have softball head coach, assistant coach one, assistant coach two, and a blank for assistant coach three.
Yes.
Why do we need three assistant coaches?
Well, that's been on there from the past, probably Lambert. And I think that, that, that particular conversation has been, has been adopted. You know, the question is, why do you need four softball coaches? I can tell you that, that the head coach is going to say it's because there is specialization happening at that level. I also can, can tell you that one of the things that head coaches are looking at is how to train assistant coaches to become head coaches. And so they're looking at a succession plan down the road.
Okay, but then in, on the baseball varsity?
Yes.
We don't have that many assistants.
Yes.
Why would one team need one than the other?
I think that's because these folks have worked in softball before. That's the best answer that I can give you on that.
So if there, if that spot, assistant coach three for softball is filled, you know, we, we would have to approve that?
Yes, you would.
And we could say no?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Okay, uh, okay. That's all I need to know, thank you.
All right.
I assume that assistant threes, if they have a JV team.
Well...
Because baseball has a JV head coach.
Yeah, I, I think that's the, the line of thought. And again, Jerry, what I've learned about coaching, having not been a coach, is that every head coach operates a little bit differently. And what I've learned about our athletic program, and tell me if I'm wrong on this, is that the head coach of the varsity program tends to be the head coach for the whole sport.
Yes.
And so whatever's going on at the varsity and JV level, that head coach is having a, a pretty strong input into somehow. That's how come in the football, at football games, we time, a lot of times, we see all the JV coaches on the sideline as well. It's all part of the process. And, and I think that what's happening there is they're thinking about a JV team, not knowing exactly how that's going to play out.
Well, the way it's open there, I'm assuming that if we get to January or February and there is no JV squad, then we don't fill that last position.
We won't fill that position. That won't happen. No.
And if we do, then it would be needed.
So probably it would be smart if the base, the varsity baseball coach started looking for some more assistance.
I think that in, in a lot of ways, Lambert, you're speaking the truth there because we're really struggling right now. We're struggling for baseball coaches. And I, I really... I mean, I, I like Tyler and, and Jimmy, and I think that Kenny has done a good job, but it's, it's time to think about the future as well.
Are we still using the ever-ten student?
Yes.
A coach approach?
That, that is, that is my rule of thumb. Yes. Wrestling is the place for that. I've seen that the most. One of the great things is we just hired somebody at the middle school who comes with tremendous wrestling credentials. So he'll be able to work with those middle school wrestlers. That, that one excites me a lot.
Okay, so any further discussion? So our motion is to approve the list as written, correct? We didn't change the motion, did we?
The motion has not been changed.
Yes, okay.
There was good discussion.
Good discussion, yes. So all in favor in approving the coaches list as presented before us? Raise your hand. And that was unanimous.
Let me see, where am I? You should have a list of child nutrition, right? This group of individuals is currently working four days a week. We're still sending meals into the community. We've been able to do that through the end of June. So I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ those individuals on the child nutrition sheet for the summer food program as listed.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I have, I'll make the motion right away now.
First, second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the school summer nutrition employee list as written? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye, we have, that looked to be unanimous.
Yeah, that was unanimous. I confused.
You should have the minutes from May 11th. I recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from May 11th, 2020 open session.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand except for Lambert.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous.
I also recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the budget amendments as Stephanie has presented them.
Do I have a motion to?
Make the motion right away, now.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
I recommend Swain County Board of Education approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar as it was presented to you today with the knowledge that it might change again. If it does, I'll bring it back for approval.
Do I have a motion?
Oh, I got motion to approve the school calendar as printed.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous.
An, an action item that we added, and I should have already done it, I'm out of my OCD order here, but I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the restart of athletic workouts within the guidelines provided by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association to begin on June 15th, noting that that's phase one and we don't have phase two. And so when that comes back for phase two, I'll bring that to you for approval again. Okay?
So do I have a motion to approve our athletic workouts beginning on June 14th, following appropriate guidelines?
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. That was unanimous.
Those are all of our action items for this evening. The June calendar events have already gone past. That June 24th is wrong. That probably should say May 24th. I don't think we have a workday on June 24th. Okay? Need for you to please put on your calendar, May the 30th.
June the 30th.
June the 30th. And that was my next thought. Stephanie, what time do you want to hold that?
What day of the week is that?
It's Tuesday, isn't it? Okay, do y'all have your calendar?
Yes, it's a Tuesday.
And when is the, when did he say the dead week was? That's the next week, the fourth, starting fourth? So that would be?
Well, July 4th on a Saturday, so, yeah.
I don't know if that's a dead week or not. Why are you asking?
Now, I'll ask Neil. We plan everything, everything we do around the granddaughter that plays everybody. And we planned our vacation, moved it because we knew with all that's going on, we put it to the dead week in July. So I guess I need to call him and find out when that dead week is.
Well, it's probably the week of the sixth. And you can, you can...
That following week, you think?
No, he said there'd be two full weeks of workouts, the week of June 15th and the week of June 17th.
The third week in July is no longer a dead week.
I know.
The only, only dead week is the fourth of July.
It'd be the last week of June, first July, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Well, Jerry, we, as long as there's a quorum here, we're good. So if you've got your vacation planned, I would say not, don't change it based on this meeting.
Oh, I know. We, we got it locked in for the third week.
And, and we can always remote you in.
Oh, I know. I'm not worried about me.
So what time on the 30th then do y'all want to meet? I, I should be working that day.
I don't know.
So six, if you're working, it's six best?
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay. Let's make it six.
Isn't that good with you, Kim?
I'm going to try to be there in person.
Yay!
I miss my board members.
We miss you.
I guess you should have run again then, you know, Lambert, because you've missed so many meetings.
I guess it's too late.
I guess it's too late.
He's going to miss us. Going to miss us.
So six o'clock, June the 30th?
Yes.
Okay. There will be several things to bring to you that night. It'll be more than just the traditional 15-minute meeting, 30-minute meeting we've had in the past. Well, I mean, I've got, I've got board policies to bring and, because we've got to get a first reading on those board policies so that we can have them in place in August. And I just don't have them ready right now, so there'll be a few more things.
Well, you need to work harder.
Thank you, Lambert. We were waiting on DPI and North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services to release guidelines. I've just gone on. There you go. We were going to, we were waiting till Thursday because the state school board last Thursday said that that's when they were going to be released. But the governor went ahead and released them today. And I have those printed on my desk right now, but I've had exactly one hour to read them. The guidelines for reopening school will be in one of three categories. It's, it will either be what's, I'm calling a hard start where all the kids are there with, with social distancing expectations. Or it will be a combined start where we have some in school and some during remote. Or it will be full remote. We have to develop a plan for all three. And then Ju, I believe July, early July, the governor will tell us exactly what we're going to do. And I was thinking that they were going to let us do it by region or by county. It's sounding, I'm not sure what he's going to do at that point. I'm just not sure. Because he's beginning to hedge going to phase three. We, we're having greater numbers right now in North Carolina, and it's more than just greater numbers of positive tests, it's percentages of positive tests. We heard this afternoon in the governor's announcement that Washington actually called Raleigh about that with a concern this last weekend. So we don't know what's going to happen with that. But we'll bring to you those three phases, those three plans, and let you look at them on June the 30th. I will also be asking a couple of you to come and help us design them. I think that we need community input, your input, and I'll have Allison Cochran involved as well, so that we'll all be on the same page. Okay? That's the most that I can give you right now about that. Put September 24th on your calendar.
Maybe.
That's the reach date, North Carolina School War Association meeting this year. It's supposed to be in Cherokee County.
I'm thinking it might be, Mark.
I think it might be. And with that, Ms. Burns, I think I'm done. I think there's nothing else on the agenda.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I like that motion.
Woo-hoo! Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye! Aye! Thank you, Lambert.
Thanks to all of you.